Alright, so the purpose of tonight's budget work session is to, first, we will be reviewing what we are planning on bringing forward on May 28. There are some corrections and some additional additions that we'd like to bring forward. And then also an opportunity for the board to have a discussion about what they've seen to date and what they might have consensus on to bring forward for maintenance. Staff will need, so the purpose tonight is if there is going to be something that the board would like to bring forward, we want to get a consensus around that tonight so that we have time to build that into our financials that we'll have to bring forward for the approved budget process. So it's, I'm going to just ask you, there are no page numbers, so that's the one at the top, it's page two, but it says Budget Principles. In 2015, the CBRC, Community Budget Review Committee, this group just announced their report tonight, developed budget principles and then brought them forward to the board for review, and then the board adopted them in February 2016. And these are ideas for decision makers to use to develop the budget. Their purpose is to create a shared understanding of values to use as building and adopting the budget. And because we're just gone through a visioning process and a strategic plan will come forward in the, in the summer, we will be looking at the budget principles again this fall to see if they are in alignment with our new vision and our new strategic plan. So for this year, we agreed that we would use these principles that were already in place. And so just a reminder, these are things that we are thinking about as we develop the budget, as we continue to go through the process. Okay? Moving on to page three where it says budget headline. So this is kind of in a nutshell what we've done in this budget, in the proposed budget. We overcame a $17 million shortfall, we made reductions, and that was based on the governor's budget. There are some adjustments since then, and we'll be going through that in a little bit. We will, we also reduced more so that we could have the $13 million in investments come forward. And really those are what the, we know transforms urban districts, and those are the superintendent priorities, you can see a listing there, and these are those that come forward, and we have additional funding or resources being allocated there. We're also responding to you as the board, the community leaders and staff. And one, one of our goals in this process was to have minimal layoffs, and there are reductions in positions, but that means through attrition, most of those are covered by people exiting the district on a annual basis, we always have some openings of positions. And then though, with the few layoffs that we do have, we, the district has worked with individuals to offer other positions if they were interested. So there has been work in that area. Moving on to the next page, this is Board's Role. This is really based on state statute and also comes from OSBA guidelines for board members, it's really similar role here. And that, the first thing that you do, and this is in the budget process, reminding you, next year we'll have also a multi-year finance process that will precede it for six months and the budget process for six months. So it'll eventually become a continuous support to the strategic plan implementation. So primary role in that first official meeting is you receive the superintendent's budget message and the proposed budget. And then tonight, and also at our, I'm going to say the wrong name, Mr. Garcia, the Cafe, World Cafe. Community event that we had at Fabian, we actually had quite a bit of participation there. But the important part here is the, the board acting as a budget committee is to receive community input and take their questions. And we've had a process, both public transparent process of questions, both by the CBRC, our Community Budget Review Committee, and the board as well as community. Any questions they want to ask, we responded to and posted those responses onto the web for the community to see. And then also the board's role is to modify budget as needed. So we know that we have some adjustments in revenue, so there will be some modifications. So we will, for sure, need, there will be a modification coming forward from the proposed. And then finally, this is the most important part, is you impose the taxes so that we can levy taxes to support our operations and our local option levy, as well as our capital bond program. So there's, that will be in that June meeting. We also will make appropriations, which gives us permission to spend, and then adopting the budget, formalized process. Moving to the next page, this is probably the best interest page out of this presentation, and that is the one that says updated revenue changes and other credits. There is $4.6 million here. The first is a million dollars right now, the increase, we have increased the beginning fund balance projection for this year by a million. So that means we're ending the year a billion more than we projected in March, so it continues to evolve and we always keep you informed of that. We also understand that we will see a $9.0 billion funding level, which also gives us an additional amount. We do have one charter school closure that we would do the pass-through to that, so in other words, we get, receive the revenue from the state and then we pay charter schools to run the charter school. That school is closing this year, so we will, we're anticipating well that the students will end up in other programs in our district. And at this point, that is an expense that we will not have next year. We also have a capital projects transfer for $2 million that we won't need, and that brings us to the $4.6 million. Now, the next page.
Are you taking questions as you go?
Oh, sure.
Can you explain the capital project?
Yep. The capital projects transfer, we do have an additional grant coming in, I forget what we're exploring. I don't know if it's been determined, to be honest with you, but it is one of the state grants to help with capital projects in schools. So that is allowing us, we're not, we don't need that $2 million in the capital projects one, it's unusual to have that large of a transfer. And that was a, really just a set aside, and then we've received the grant since then, so it's not needed as a transfer anymore. So it does allow it to run in operations. I'll show you more on the expenditure side too about that in just a second.
Just a quick note related to sort of that off topic, if we could get an update when appropriate on the Trillium process for, until we were engaged with helping families figure out what their step is, so.
Dr. Curtis?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Not right, not.
Okay, yeah, but I want her to hear the comment.
If we could get a kind of follow-up of where, how we're doing helping Trillium families transition to their next EPS experience.
Thank you.
It was good, how we would be supporting the process for families, could be helping to get a update about where they've ended up.
Okay, we did that.
Okay? So just.
Thank you. And then CBRC, I think we had discussed the increase in the state school fund. Is that, is it still our understanding that that money is going to have strings attached to it, it's going to be dedicated? You can't do.
No, it's 28 million across the state going from the governor's budget to the, what's come forward, it was 8.972.
Yeah, so three.
And then 28 million more would make it 9.0 billion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't ask the question clearly.
Okay.
Does it come to us free and clear without obligation?
Yes.
Oh.
It's part of the state school fund formula.
Oh.
There's 1 million.
Okay.
There's 1 million dollars.
Yeah, that, that's change.
Not the 2 billion, not the 2 billion.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Good, that's change from when we last discussed. Thank you, great.
Okay. I don't know if this is the right time to ask, but we should be getting a new revenue forecast tomorrow?
There's an economic forecast tomorrow, yes.
Do you anticipate any major changes?
I, we, the major change came out yesterday with the Student Success Act.
Right.
So I, I believe the, what I've heard is it is increased in terms of revenues, but I think that was pushed through with the act that came forward. I will hear the official economic forecast tomorrow, but, for the state revenue, but it's, I'm not anticipating at this point another change in funding.
Okay, so, so let me, so if there is any increase in state revenue, it will go elsewhere?
I think that they have already anticipated that in the plan that they approved yesterday.
Okay.
Okay?
A long list of everybody who didn't get funded in the Student Success Act.
Yes.
It's in line.
So I'm moving on to the expenditure changes. I'm sorry, can we just?
Summarize again, the reduced capital projects transfer is that we're not transferring.
We were transferring from general fund to capital projects, it's not needed. We have a state grant that supports, we were approved for a state grant that supports capital projects, so we are keeping that in general fund. And I'm going to show you in a minute what it's helping to offset, if I can get to the expenditure side. So the first item on the changes to expenditures is we had an error in the HR budget, we had, we were missing three FTE, and that's now corrected, and is in, it would need, well, it's not now corrected, we're, we are asking for you to make that change and correct it when we move from the proposed to the approved budget. The next item is, we estimate that our maintenance budget currently has $2.4 million unspent. I made a promise to the board that we would spend every dollar in maintenance. They have awarded contracts, they have the, work will start at Students' League, but it's very difficult to get some of the work they're trying to get done while students are in school. So this will be something that we will do every year. Right now we have a fiscal year that ends June 30th, and what happens is they start a project with one fiscal budget and end it with another. So what we're allowing them to do is create, we'll take their money at the end of the year and set it into a fund that carries over into the next year so that by the end of August, they're spending down the remaining for those summer projects. So we'll allow this on a regular basis so that they can always fund those summer projects each year.
Sorry, I missed it, was this Riddler roof, was it those that drew for the debt contract for last year?
No, no, that was a bond project.
Okay.
This is general fund, these are things like an HVAC system that has traps that stay open and don't close properly.
Okay.
And needs massive repairs in a high school.
Okay.
A couple of our high schools need some massive repairs in their HVAC system repair to have them function better. So that's some of it, but I would say HVAC is a big component of this summer work, and it's also repairs to roofs, where we're not replacing the roof, you know, we need it along the line. So it's many different kinds of projects, electrical, but it's keeping our buildings in good order, it's flooring, it's, the list just goes, it's endless.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is an open question, regardless of how the phrasing might sound, is.
Sure.
I'm curious if this was in the original budget proposal, was that just a matter of there's a lot of work in preparing the budget?
It is trying to estimate what it was. We were hoping to be spent by June 30th, but it became clear as the farther we went that we weren't going to make it, so, and working with the maintenance crew, we made a plan. And this is a best practice, especially for the maintenance crew, it's, it's really difficult to take money from two different years and have two different POs and, you know, all these contracts for going over. So this just allows them to start in June and carry through till August, and that's their natural time to do projects.
That, that part of it I get.
Okay.
Would, wouldn't this be money that was unspent from last year that gets carried over, so why wouldn't it show up as savings?
Because historically, the maintenance budget has gone unspent. Okay? I think I shared that with you on the first meeting, there was millions of dollars going unspent, and that's why I made that commitment to the board, we will spend every dollar. So now, so that really it's less savings, because in the past, we used to have account on maintenance carrying forward millions without spending them. And so now we're saying, no, we're spending every dollar because our buildings need it. So in the past, let me just pick a number.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
$4 million is still sitting in their accounts, and it would just go into the reserves of general fund.
Okay.
But now I'm saying, no, that 2.4 million that we know we haven't spent, we're now going to spend it, but it's going to take us till August to finish it, the project.
Okay, so how's this different from a month ago?
Our maintenance team needed time to get, this is the fir, this is the first time for them doing it.
Okay.
They just needed time to get everything in order.
Got you, okay.
Yeah, I didn't know how much they were going to actually get spent, we're far enough in the year, we know, we have the number, and now, and now we, and we have the contracts identified, but, you know, we've done the procurement work we needed to, so we're ready to, to do the work.
I'm still kind of struggling, if this is built into this year's budget, that we can pick there, then why is this a negative with that positive at the same time? But we'll keep going, and we can do that a month.
Okay, I can draw a picture too.
Yeah.
All right. So the.
I'd also like to ask on the maintenance, are we going to get to the bathrooms at Franklin with this?
I can't answer that question, but we'll take it down as a question.
Thank you. Tiles, everything.
There's a lot of stuff like at Franklin that could, I think you need some additional shop.
Okay, so I'm going to move on, the next ad is the Successful School Survey. We did that for the first time this year, and we're going to continue that going forward, so it's in addition to, to the budget, it wasn't just, we didn't put it in, in the proposed, and we're recognizing it needs to be a permanent placement, and now we've gone through it. We have the need for, as our buildings are modernized, they have projectors that people need to be on ladders to change goals, and we also need to have support for district-wide trainings. So we're adding a techno, technology support position that will help with maintaining the new equipment that we're adding to schools, as well as just support overall. In the past few years, they have lost positions, and as you know, we're only getting more and more technology as we modernize, and as well as just the, all the computers the kids have, all the student devices. So having more support, with that combination of the AV support for training, you know, we have district-wide trainings now for principals, well, that requires AV support when we have a training. So.
Yeah, that's what, it's not always a full-time position for, for the support right now, but as we're adding modernized, it, it, the need is very apparent to have this position. We have these great projectors, these great systems at Franklin or Roosevelt, and at Fabian that have been kind of turned over without being guidance, and we have really in direct support for what we're going to do with them. So this is part of that lifecycle that we're going to have to consider because we have these pieces of that. So this will be a huge help for, for folks and for somebody to be able to say, this is what is responsible.
So another off-topic question for later response. I know officially we use PCs, Windows-based, and yet we have a number of especially art-oriented classrooms that use Macs. Is there support for Macs?
Yeah, we're fully on board with, it's not just senior leadership that gets to purchase Macs, we will support that in any school, from anybody that does that.
Yeah, I think that's different.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll just leave it there.
Okay.
There are significant shifts that we're making in our systems and support in schools and departments. Okay, I'm moving on to foundation and strategic partnerships, we're adding resources, you know, we've heard, heard some of your ideas and your support for that, so we'd like to continue to expand the capacity in our chief engagement officers area, and so what specifically is that?
So you just gave a presentation to Chief Garcia, you want to talk about the additional support there for your team position?
Yes, so, so the position is, as, and we'll talk about this next week, the, as we build out the fund, you know, one, you know, okay, so part of the conversation is twofold, one is that the fund will engage in a conversation with this school board around an operational agreement to establish the, the protocols between the two entities. We know to, to manage the local school foundation efforts, we need additional, an additional support. We are in conversations with private entities to support the backend, or financial, to financially support that FTE. And so what will most likely happen is that this position will support, again, the local school foundations, and then with the operational agreement, you know, cover that cost.
So get us started. It's one position plus non-salary.
So I thought though, when we took this back, New Seasons, which has been supporting it administratively, was going to continue it, and this was going to be a no add to our budget.
That is, that is correct, so I'm meeting with New Seasons tomorrow as part of that conversation, so.
Then what's the 150?
Some, some of this is with community engagement, there was an increase to non-salary in both the strategic partnership side and the community engagement side. When you expand the staff, and we, we have a need to provide non-salary support to a department, so there's 50,000 in non-salary budget, and there's 100,000 in a position.
I'm still confused, because I thought when it came over here, if, assuming New Seasons is again, I thought it was going to be a no cost to the dis, to the district.
It's some of the general fund portion of the position, there's the community engagement component, there's the strategic partnership component, and the foundation. So it's, it, we also have, so we're really trying to expand, we're listening to what the board said in the last meeting about how if we expanded our capacity there, we think about what kind of resources we can bring in.
So maybe, maybe I'll clarify it this way, director permit words. So my understanding is that this is, you know, as you, as you recall from the last board meeting, my community engagement budget is only 30,000, and so part of the $50,000 increase, non-personnel, is to support, you know, the year-long engagement efforts that we do. So that's the 50,000. The 100,000 that is mentioned in terms of that FTE, this FTE will support, you know, a big chunk of our work will be around, again, building strategic partnerships. Most generally, there's a fraction of that FTE that will be dedicated to supporting our local school foundations. That portion will be subsidized by New Seasons if, you know, as, as their continued partnership in this program.
Does, does the New Seasons subsidy cover the entire cost of an FTE, or is it a partial subsidy?
So, so right now, that's part of the, the work, so the, the FTE that we are looking at to support is, ranges in terms of a salary between 40 and 40,000 and 50,000, plus, you know, plus the cost of, or the French, we're looking at about 60, 65. That is about the, the amount that New Seasons contributes to, to all-hands race currently. And again, we're, I'm going to be in a conversation tomorrow morning with New Seasons about what that looks like. And so again, I just want to emphasize that the FTE that we will be including in here will be, will have multiple roles, right? Will have the role to support, the, the fraction of their FTE will be to support some of the operations of, you know, handling the checks and whatnot, but then a big portion of their little work will be dedicated to supporting me and my team as we, we continue to raise dollars on behalf of the system. So as you can imagine, part of, part of the challenge is, you know, since I've taken on engagement, you know, there's been a lot, because we're a very engaging city, a very engaging community, and so part of my dedication over the last few months has been very solely focused on like engagement, engagement efforts. And so having the need for an additional person that can support, you know, our Tulon, Robin, and Camille, who are our active fundraisers, will be an added support in our department.
So, but, I mean, that's the comment I made last meeting was, how's that, that analysis is pretty positive, so, honey, cheap. So where's the plus 50 million for, I think that that extra FTE will bring, that was a joke, okay?
There's, there's an opportunity cost if we put something there, and I think, I'd be interested in just benchmarking whether we're about where we were, and I guess I'm concerned with, because we said this was going to be a no, a no net increase, and in theory, the beneficiaries of foundation support are those schools that have foundations. Or maybe the job description is different and.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Yeah, some clarity around that would be, I think, useful.
Because I think we need to be able to explain it to the community, because we're taking it back, and it actually primarily, the support primarily benefits those schools that have foundations, and then we're adding on, actually, not.
Definitely.
We need to have more, I need more clarity, I can't speak over details.
Definitely, and I, you know, again, and I'm happy to share more next, next Tuesday, but I will say that my, my focus around this effort is to ensure that those communities that, that don't have that bandwidth or have the opportunity to raise those dollars, that we're providing that additional support. And so, so this person will support specifically Robin, who is in charge of school partnerships, and ensuring that the schools like Lent, like Riddler, the schools that this year, she had about a half a dozen schools, CSI, TSI schools, that she was raising money for, this person will augment some of that effort. And again, I'm happy to show you a little bit more, more clarity.
So it's probably my, if you scratch out foundation, but community engagement, strategic partnerships, that's really what the, it's my area.
Yes, I, just, we can move on, but I'd like more detail on what that position and the money, and how it is a larger piece.
So I'm going to move on to the next line.
One, one last comment, it seems like every week we see Jonathan's name attached to some new community engagement initiative. I've drawn a company away, it's like, you know, 30,000 isn't going to get the muster there, so if we're looking at, at adjustments, the budget, this is certainly one thing that should be in place for us to decide. Have the people, not just resources to support activity, but.
The next item is a carryover for Tubman and Rosemary Heights, there's 900,000 balance at this point, and we're carrying that over into the second year to continue supporting the new two middle schools. and we're carrying that over into the second year to continue supporting the new two middle schools. So that's unspent from the original allocation and is being carried over this next year. Very similar to the maintenance carryover. This would not carry over past that second year.
Are there any? Trying to hear words. So this 900,000, are there any restrictions on how it can be spent? Is it just like available to respond to needs as they rise?
So basically, we can also utilize that funding for feeder schools that feed directly into those schools to do something like around transition camps, to do some school promotion. It's also utilized for supplies, resources, even technology for each of those schools. And it's also utilized for professional development. Because in those specific schools, those, the, the teachers are allotted to additional days of professional development. So we can also use it for that as well.
Two issues on this line item. We've, I guess that this current board has placed Oakley Green on sort of equal footing with Tubman and Roseway Heights, just given the implementation they had. So I'm curious.
Oakley's within this, it's just not listed here. But Oakley's also clustered into the middle school conversion budget, which they have been, they have also been utilizing that throughout the year as well.
Great, so my second question was, would be, I'd like a lot more detail on this because 900,000 is a lot, a lot of money. And how it's being, how that 900,000 would be envisioned being allotted? Because if I'm a school who needs, you know, 40,000 for something and I just see a big plug number versus if it's, there's a, it's across three middle school clusters, there's a sort of articulation between the elementaries and the middle schools, it tells a different story.
We can get that to you. And again, it's, it's really supposed to be utilized with feeder patterns. So I know it specifically states the middle schools because it really is. That's what the focus of the budget was created for, the middle schools opening. But it's also aimed to provide resource to, to the feeder pattern schools. Again, particularly around transition, school-wide, you know, field trips to the, to the schools themselves and so forth. But we can, we can get you something in more detail in terms of how it's been utilized since the budget was, since the budget was allocated to that seven years ago. We can get that one.
Okay, and the last part is the master arts education plan, phase one. And Superintendent Guerrero, is that something you want to speak to?
Sure. Just for a few activities, a good timing because the board just served a state-of-the-art presentation. They pointed out a lot of gaps in our arts pathways. It's definitely a priority a year from now when we get new resources to make the investments to pluck all those holes. But there's a couple of areas where, you know, we've heard clearly from communities isn't an equitable situation. So part of the proposed investment here is to support for a couple of positions. For instance, one, added arts FTE to support programming at Beaumont Middle School as well as Regler and Scott. This would be one position that provides instruction at all three schools and that culminates. In addition, we've heard clearly from, from families in those schools also the desire to be the first sort of pilot who would become an expanded summer arts academy in EPS. So the team actually just presented tonight my proposal, what that would take. So I have a proposal now for a one-week arts academy to serve 200 students from Tubman, George, Beaumont, as well as graduating fifth graders into those middle schools to help them get a head start and try to make up for some of that incomplete programming. So it won't be cost for an arts academy like that serving 200 students, the 75K. We sketched it out, if we made that a 10-day program, it would be double that, 150. And even showcase, we're all students coming together, we want to share. So that's the cost of the teachers' materials for a program this summer. Just kind of pilot what that would look like to bring the teachers together from different disciplines. There's also a request in order to continue our work on the master arts education plan. So I need to support teachers continuing to, to come together and accelerate that work as well as adding TOSA to our only two-person BABA team in the district. So that would give us a highly needed, a second TOSA to cover more balance of the other arts discipline. So that would make it a three-person team for the coming school year, especially when we're talking about a year from now expanding arts education offerings and electives. So, so that's what that 436 is intended to look forward to cover.
Would the summer camp involve the full, like visual and performing parts?
It includes teachers in the proposal from every discipline as well as some customized, more unique discipline, part-time folks. I mean, so it's maybe probably a roster, a dozen or so people working through these rotations and students would get an intensive experience. So they're just standing by because they want to send out invitations because we want to do a targeted approach for particularly kids in those underserved communities, especially for graduating fifth graders. So this would be at least an attempt to, to do something unique to support middle school arts programming this summer.
So I'd be, just, it's almost half a million dollars to get a, like a more detailed plan and what gaps we're filling because I'm just listening to the schools that are being listed, you know, it's like, what about Marysville, Bridger, Lane? I mean, there's a lot of kids in outer southeast that I'm sure aren't getting equitable access to arts either. Yes, I'd be interested in, if we're going to spend that amount of money, what's the sort of criteria, how is, how does it sequence so that we eventually are able to serve all the, all the schools that need it? And it doesn't, it doesn't become, I say, I'm concerned, I'm very supportive of all the investments we made in Tubman, Roseway Heights, Oakley Green, so Northeast and North. There's a big other piece, the other side of East Portland that hasn't had that combination happen yet and hasn't had a similar set of investments. So I would want to see how that flows through and how we eventually get all the underserved students having access to, to arts.
That's absolutely our desire and goal to, to be able to do that eventually. There's a few things, you know, off the top of my head, could you, you know, make it to one-week camps, you know, one in Southeast and one in Lane, Culley and North Portland neighborhoods. So that would be a little coordination to get the team wrapping around that. We could keep it a 10-day camps and maybe go a little bit hauptsies of Craig over here on the middle school. That might be another way to kind of, to shift in towards as many opportunities possible. We just didn't want another summer to go by and not do any for kids that haven't had those opportunities and they entered middle schools. So that's a, that's a possible.
So getting a lot more detail and then seeing how it is that plays out in an effective way across the district. As, you know, I guess tonight, only having two people show up, I don't know if that's an indication of we got this nailed or more, for example, the people in Southeast just have no idea that we're passing a budget and what they, what they should be asking for or expecting for, you know, how to engage, you know, and help their schools that, you know, are, they're under-resourced or getting inequitable resources.
Okay. Moving on to the next, actually, before you though, I want to point out that the total of the revenue is within 50,000 dollars of the total of the expenditures. It's still, there's two items in the revenue I want to point out to you. The beginning income balance and then also the state school fund. Really, it's a reconciliation that's needed for three years worth of funding that we're just now getting tomorrow. So we are going to be reviewing that this week. And so it is possible this number could change and we will certainly bring that to you as soon as, as soon as we have that reconciled. And it's something that will come forward, that reconciliation in the May 28 budget meeting. In the meantime, we don't anticipate it going down. We don't anticipate it going up. We've been conservative in our estimates. So that could, you know, we still, there's still a lot to shake out, you know, it's a big budget. So we're still combing through. People are providing us information when they discover something they thought was different than what they have. And so I don't want to be overly optimistic that there's going to be a big chunk of money there, but there could be, you know, something smaller that could be, allow us to spend on something else. But I, but I, well, we've just needed a few more days to get that work done in order to really have it fully reconciled. So having said that, there's a couple of things that have been bubbling up. And I've heard, and the, the two items that are on this list are, because they're things that I've heard repeatedly from multiple areas in the district. So if I hear something once or maybe twice, it's not on this list. But these are things that I'm hearing multiple times. And so the first is, how much, what it costs to, right now we have a proposal of a four or five blend in certain schools across the district. If we undid that, it would be a 2.4 million dollars cost to make it so that we have just fourth grade separated from fifth grade. Another area that I, that it continues to be heard is middle school electives. And really to get to a more equitable elective across the district for middle schools will be about 4.4 million dollars.
You mean the middle schools and middle grades?
Yes.
That partly answers my questions because the question I saw for Beaumont was 100,000. I'm trying to figure out how it was. That was reported by Oscar to the school community.
So the 100,000 is in that master arts education plan, phase one? The, there's 100,000 for that?
Yeah, I understand that, but, but just as an example of one school. I was trying to figure out how we got to 4.4 million. If that's one school, you don't have 44 middle schools. So I was just trying to make.
For one FTE, I don't.
It's not always one FTE.
Right.
Yeah.
That's just one stopgap and for really going to do a comprehensive wheel of electives in every middle. Assuming we have the sketches and everything else figured out, it would be a big number. The, the middle grades and K8s would be quite considerable also.
But it's also my impression that if the middle school doesn't have a DLI program, it's not a good pressing equation for our, because of the DLI model that we.
Right, yes.
That it's, that the, the real, the real crush that we've heard from is for the middle schools that have DLI, which is many of them. So I did, just trying to figure out how. Maybe there's a, maybe halfway piece of that that we don't care. I'm just throwing that out.
Scott, can you speak up? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's, I'm tired. So maybe instead of looking at the whole thing, if there's a, an equity formula that says, well, let's address it in these areas, that would be less than 4.4 million. And again, I'm knowing what's, I think that's something we should talk about as, if we do this, then what don't we do for, if, if some money drops out of the sky? This would be our next priority or something like that.
The interesting thing is, just using DLI as our criteria may actually benefit a lot of higher SES schools.
I, I think we have to be thoughtful about our middle school redesign. I mean, we, we can put in some, some patchwork solutions in the immediate coming year. There's an opportunity to do that, but I would want to look at the whole thing. And so work out the logistics so we could guarantee equitable access to a wheel of collectives, you know. That's going to take some time to, to work out even aggressively over the next six months. And there are a lot of labor partner issues wrapped in that as well. So it's easy to add an FTE to offer more sections in the same workday, but it's not as easy to actually reimagine the whole thing.
It seems like there's two issues. So there's the, the music DLI, the, the six or seven period. That seems like that's one issue. And I think we should, we had a brief discussion of it a couple of board meetings ago, but I think people who watched, I got a lot of questions of like, so, like, how do you get one of those deals of, you know, this, because it sounds like some schools are getting it? So having some sort of equitable access across the board. So that's in like one issue. And then the other issue, I'll just go back to that Excel spreadsheet that the district has that has the actual section by sections of what all the middle, what's offered at all, in the middle grades, whether it's a middle school or a K8. And really looking at, from a comparative basis and it, it's, you're never going to have, you know, four lang, or world languages like West Sylvan has or three, whatever, at some of the, the smaller schools. But are we offering a world language at every K8 that those sixth to eighth graders have an opportunity? So to me, that's where I see the more of the gap, not that we're going to have three world languages at every middle, middle grades. But do they have one? And do they have it every day of the week, like?
And that's what I'm suggesting is we actually need to figure out what those guiding principles are that will be true to a middle, for a middle grader.
I guess when I look through here, I mean, I see too often sort of like office aid as the sort of electives and not, in some schools, and just not really robust selection. So you have at least a base of, these are the, these are the five we agree every K8 or middle school should have so that kids in the middle grades get them.
Do we still have office aid as well?
Or we agree that we don't have office aid as an elective?
Yeah, I do, we do.
Well, that's.
We do so.
I think we all want to see a substantive change in our middle grades programming. I know Chief Valentina, the school together, middle school task force and principals and other people across the country will keep on to think about just for the coming school year, what will we forecast, what can we sort of try to resolve as some issues? But fundamental question remains around, you know, middle school redesign altogether, not knowing we have no resources to really imagine that. I don't want to add anything, but it's very much a shared goal of ours to make sure, you know, regardless of economy of scale, that something would be true. You know, you mentioned access to world language, that that would be there for any middle grader, regardless of where you go to school. I could think of 10 other things I would want to see. And that requires a flexibility during the course of the week for a given student, which actually gives us an opportunity for more project-based learning or hands-on, longer inquiry periods, maybe you squeeze in a course during the course of the week versus our discussion about a traditional six or seven period schedule.
Yeah. Okay, so I, go ahead.
No, 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 I was just.
I was going to say, I, I still have a lot of questions about how we are allocating FTE and courses for the middle grades now. Because I'm not seeing the bump for our three new middle schools that we should have gotten, that we, we were led to believe we would get. I think the whole community was led to believe we would get. If you look at. If you look at Oakley and Roseway Heights and Tubman, the number of electives at each one of those schools is exactly the same as the number of electives that was offered at the wealthiest feeder school three years ago. It hasn't gone up at all. And although Irvington has a very nice foundation, neither Roseway Heights K eight nor Beach K eight did. So it's not foundation dollars that we're artificially boosting up the number of electives in those K eights. So how is it that with about, you know, say a hundred fifty kids in the middle school years at each one of those, we combined four into a middle school and we don't get any economy of scale? That doesn't make a lot of sense. So to the larger point, yeah, we've got to really look at what we're doing for all of this. Something I'd throw out, Superintendent, as long as you mentioned doing the master arts education plan, which I think is wonderful, I'd, I'd just like to make it explicit since you and most of the other staff weren't here for it. The arts tax funded positions, it's a wonderful thing that the community is doing that. But between the specifics of how we could spend the money only on K five and how the district responded to that, which ended up being laying off all the middle, or all the music and arts teachers for the middle school years in, in the K eights, we do have some surprisingly stupid situations still that, that are going on. And I, I hope you'll look at all of that.
Yeah, I wasn't even aware of that.
So, yeah.
There was a reduction in middle grades.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there was a massive hemorrhage.
It was more funding the subsidy.
Yeah, yeah. The district just took the money, put it into what it could, and said to hell with the rest. Why I don't have any more there.
We bring up a lot of important points. We're still trying to sort of understand past practice, staffing levels, and what's the appropriate level in the middle grades, and the bigger questions we want to tackle.
So I apologize, I just thought that we had entered the office aid, kitchen aid, whatever electives. And if we haven't, then, then, whatever, now, to me, that's number, now, we should, we should move money to add that. Yes, Superintendent.
I don't know that we have, I, I have not seen kitchen aid, quite a few office aid positions, yeah.
Still, I just, look, so can we like-
We'll look into that. I'm not aware of any, but certainly we clarify for everybody what's allowed to, you know.
If that is still happening, that's like, we got to just break down stock. So, that would be great.
I can circulate the, the big massive spreadsheet that shows.
Yeah, what was that, what was that updated?
I don't know, I got it last, I got it from staff this year. We all did. I'll look at it.
So my love for school business came from fifth grade being the lunch duty for relief for the secretary on my elementary school. So it carried over. So sometimes it plants a seed. It may, I mean, I know that's not the case for every child, but I'm just telling you that, that, um, with my first taste of, of school administration.
My mother saw it on my schedule, she marched down to the principal's office and she heard that.
Mine wasn't on the schedule, it was elementary school during my lunch period, so. But anyway, I'm going to continue on now. I, I handed this out tonight as a reminder that we're looking at fifty thousand students. So as we're, I think at the beginning, we wanted to just speak about all the voices that come to talk to us and all the voices that don't come to talk to us. And this year there, I think there's been fewer voices than we've had. But I think it's also from the good work that the team came together in, in proposing the budget and really trying to listen to where the needs were. The reason I want to have you take a look at this, we call it the heat map, just reminding you that if you look in this column that says, it's in the yellow to green area on the right, it says two thousand nineteen twenty dollars per student. So that is how this is sorted. So it shows from highest to lowest on our schools of dollars spent. So, so that's the sorting. It's not alphabetical, it's showing the most dollars, okay? So when you look in the red two sections on this end, you have math and language arts for three years of student achievement. Just to get a sense of where we're spending the most money now this year, now, this isn't historical, it's what, excuse me, what would be spent in nineteen twenty. We prioritize schools, the red need the most improvement. And then scaling, if you go to the second side, you'll see it start turning to blue where there's higher achievement. So, when we look at the next section, it's how many students per FTE in each of the schools. So when it's green to, to red, green is having more staffing for, for the number of students compared to the red on the backside. Again, increasing the staffing where there's need for improvement. And we have a three-year history there. And then the third is the dollars spent per student for three years. And again, really looking at, when you compare that to the next one where you have the brand reduced lunch or meals by direct certification percentage, you can see that there's definitely, it goes from orange to green. So the highest poverty is orange. And when you flip it over, you get to the other side where it's turned green, okay? So as the poverty level has gone down, so have the dollars and, and the achievement has gone up, okay? Now, I will point out that these are not all the same three years. They can't be because we have dollars for two years that we don't have the achievement results yet. But we still wanted to show three years of history of achievement, okay? So just recognize that the years are not, you can't align them in, to the same years. I bring this to your attention because to me, out of this whole budget document that we produced for you, this whole big picture that we brought to you as a story, I think this is one of the most important pages in this budget document because it really tells where our priorities are, what is the most important work that we need to do. And I will say that you can see also the CSI, TSI, title schools being given priorities on this chart. So, I'm really looking forward, with all the investments we're making in what we know will improve practice in the classroom and improve instruction for our students. And then having also that systemic changes and, and supports for our teachers. I'm really looking forward to looking to three years from now when we prioritize the dollars in the way I believe that we should be prioritizing them and to see the results that we're getting with making, not only just spending, not just reducing class size, but also looking at what, what are we doing to improve our classrooms and schools? So, but with that, just wanting to make sure everybody is reminded this is how we prioritize our budget.
Is this all SBC? Is that, you know, for the high, for the high school?
Yes. So with that, I'm going to go to the last, do you guys need another bit of this sheet?
Yes.
The reproduction, the smaller reproduction in, in, what is with one circle?
That was a presentation in a previous budget.
Oh, oh.
You can just, or, I just copied a page and forgot the circles there.
Thank you.
And with that slides in my eyesight, I didn't see it. All right, last page.
So just, just on your sort of future, future thinking, I mean, what I guess the, so say the, once this success acumen comes through, you know, I'd be interested. So like, if, if we wanted to move sitting beyond eight percent of, you know, math, what do we need to invest in? Because it may be that we're not just moving them a small increment, but a larger increment than say, Lee that is at thirty-three percent, or Brad that's at forty-three. Because some of these, the differentiation, some of these per student dollars, it's like, what are we spending? Is differentiated dollars being spent on the right things to change the levels of student outcomes? And again, I don't know whether it's SBC is the right one or not, but I guess that would, that's what I be curious or want to know, but versus just will layer a little bit more depending on where you are in the, in the chart. But what are we, what are we putting into that? And then, what specifically are they investing in that's going to move that, that number? I mean, sitting in Dustal, it's shocking, it's surprising, they're just like one line apart and one of them is eight percent math and the other's twenty-eight percent math achievement levels.
Those are exactly the right questions, I remember, and so the ones that our principal supervisors think about every day. That's why the differentiated school improvement plan is, where the team spends its time thinking about, I think you heard the snapshot of that in our presentation from the team about differentiated school supports. New investment would actually allow us to put in evidence-based tier twos, additionally certified intervention teachers, et cetera. There would be a whole menu of prescriptions we could begin to apply. Then it would be fun to actually look at these along the pivot table or matrix to see, it's not really a resource issue, I mean, it is, around a broader array of outcome data of conditions in the school combined with the intervention plan. I, I would expect, if we stay focused, that we would see these outcome, outcome improvements. So, because that's exactly the right question. How do we strategically use any of the investments in really targeted ways? In a way that our school community would get actually benefit out of it?
And right now, we're analyzing that through the improvement science process and how we're completely revamping how we are constructing our school improvement plans. Before, our school improvement plans in Portland were really a compliance-based tool just to satisfy the ODE. Now we're completely revamping them, so we're actually doing some really in-depth analysis around the root cause of why we have an eight percent achievement rate, you know, in mathematics. And really having instructional leadership teams at each site really dig into those root cause analysis as we build out the new school improvement planning process. So that, that's actually the right questions and the conversations that our school-based leadership teams are having as we speak now, as they're constructing those three goals around literacy and mathematics and culture and climate.
However, as I said to you and with Dr. Valentina, when you look at what I understand is the only in-person support for kids who are behind in the schools, as reflected in the budget book, is the instructional specialists. And the allocation of those does not match where the numbers of kids who need it are. And I think the same is also true of the equity allocation. There's a real disconnect there when you look, when you take that percentage here, take it out of enrollment and see what the raw numbers of kids are who actually need help. They do not appear to be getting the in-person help that they need.
Yeah, and it would also be an incomplete and probably flawed theory of action of throwing FTE at problems were, were the solution. This is why we have focused so much attention on making sure we have a solid core curriculum in tier one so that all teachers can actually differentiate to an extent, meet the needs of diverse learners. And then we can get really specialized with the students who need something more because we'll never be able to purchase enough instructional specialists, and frankly, they don't exist. So, how are we going to train up all of our, our educators and make sure that in every school community, there's some access to some of those specialized supports that are, that are more unique? So, this is, this is why we have to sort of make the base strong so that as we move up the pyramid, you know, we're, we're being efficient with, with those resources.
So at this point, I'd like to get us to this slide that says guided discussion. And I ask the board, as you look, as you think about our original proposed budget, everything there plus the two pages that show the updated revenue and the expenditure changes, is that something you can support as we presented tonight? Do you agree with the priorities? And is there consensus for an investment in any other specific area? A little bit kind of what I'm wanting to know from you as a board.
It's also a question, when we ask questions at board meetings, it doesn't appear, there weren't answers, it doesn't appear that answers are on the spreadsheet. Or they're in the wrong place.
I think Cynthia can respond a little better.
Hope you can take it offline and guess.
I'm sorry, no, you can, you can, you can tell me and they can-
So, in terms of a discussion, do you support what we brought forward to you tonight? Do you agree with the priorities? And is there consensus for any other investment in any specific areas? Now granted, I may not have additional funds, but if I do, as we reconcile, shake it all out, is there something that is a priority that we have consensus from the board to bring forward on May twenty eighth?
So one sort of initial question I have is, I just, I don't know what process you went through before you agreed the line and said, we're going with these and not with these in terms of you came to some kind of prioritization. So that you kind of have an idea of what were the last in, in that sense. So if the board said, you know what, we really want to do X, but given that we have, you know, where, where would that money come from? What would we, what would we give up if we shifted mine?
So it would need to be a trade-off, yeah.
Right, so, we don't, what we don't have a sense is, what were your kind of last in? As, as you were going through a prioritization process, what, what did you find that, that kind of was the last in before you set up?
It really came from across different, it wasn't a, it came from different areas. The one is a correction, so that's things that are in the budget now that we need to bring forward, the HR piece. It came from various areas throughout the organization. And then the superintendent and I sat down and went through that list and compiled the list.
Are you talking about this?
Yes.
So I'm also talking about the original. So I'm also talking about the original, uh,
Oh, you're talking about when we had a larger dollar amount?
No, I'm, I'm talking about there was the, the, the original budget presentation. Um, there are some things you included in that and some things you didn't include in that. And brought together requests from all sorts of different departments and made a choices about what's in, what's out. I've talked about what were the sort of, uh,
It was really more investments expanding, you know, we would like to expand. We had made a priority in, um, in November as a SLT, we made a priority to really support the instructional side. So when you look at the, most of our investments, it is in that, um, part of the work. There was a few operational that were safety and just had, had to be included. But we really, um, there were tiers of work that could be done in, in terms of the instructional side. Um, increasing curriculum dollars, we, we don't have enough for what we need in our curriculum, clearly we don't. And even just the professional development and support of schools. So if you're asking what would be other ways that we would prioritize as a SLT, those were the areas we were prioritizing.
So if we said, you know, we wanna spend two hundred thousand more here, what would be your first choice to say, okay, that means look at two hundred thousand kind of here, here, and here?
I'm not looking for a, a long list from the board where I'm gonna have to go back and make reductions. What I'm trying to offer up, as we're reconciling our revenues, because that's where I see, we still might have a piece come through. Is there something that the board has consensus on that they'd want us to make a, a priority on it? So I'm not really wanting, unless the board wants to help with trade-off, I'm, it's not something, um,
Except for I look at, um, four point six million dollars just got spent and like, we didn't have any, I mean, it's, it's a list that somebody else came up, came up with. And I'm not speaking to the disagreeing point, so I, I don't think it's really of, um, that's not how I would expect the conversation.
What would you suggest?
Well, I guess it would have been good to know there was four point six million, or it could be four point five million dollars. And then a discussion about is there, you know, agreement on some of the issues that have been raised over the last several meetings of where that money would go. And it's not saying anything about these particular priorities that are listed. But it's like, so four point five million came in and it's gone. And, you know, I think it shouldn't be, well, now if the board, you know, we, if we've been talking about something or it's been a focus for the board for the last, you know, whether it's a year or, you know, two months during the budget process, that it's all sort of, now it becomes a net-net, like some, like you've gotta go find the resources. And I don't view that as the board, like rewriting a budget, it's just being part of the discussion.
Sure. So I can tell you that these numbers are hot off the press today. I was reconciling them in negotiations this afternoon. Working with staff and, you know, having had conversations last week. So when you say, um, so really, we're trying to get this to you two weeks before you need to approve it. That was our goal, is to give you time, uh, to think about it. So it really is the, as soon as we could get these numbers to you. And we had, I'm very pleased that the two numbers came out very close together. They were developed independently. They weren't developed because this was there and that was spilled. They were developed independently. And when I finally reconciled them today, at the final reconciliation, I couldn't have been more pleased that we were fifty thousand dollars apart. Because it could have been another, a, a different, uh, problem.
So I'm, I'm not saying there's any bad intentions, I'm just saying that there, there may be other priorities. And so to express to Scott that, well, we have to, you know, come up with other, you're not looking for the board to review the budget, it's like, but, so if you wanna add something, you gotta find something, you know, it's gotta net, net out.
It, it, it just does, it, it does have, and I'm not suggesting that it has to be the board that identifies that. But what I'm seeing is that if, um, if additional resources come forward, it would be good for us to know what were some of the things the board is thinking of. If it doesn't, then I need to know, is that something you're willing to have reductions in other org areas to pay for? And so I find taking the budget forward just as is as we presented. Right? But I also wanna give, this is the opportunity for the board to discuss their priorities. That's the intent of this.
So you wanna just, you wanna just jump in? Not that we haven't already.
So I'm, I'm, I'm still back to, it's an imperfect process this year, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. But the sense of your conversations before the actual budget formulation started, you know, you listened, you listened to us and it came out of our discussions. And I believe you're coming up with this budget in response to a lot of that. And it may not perfectly match our actual, well, now that we're actually talking dollars and cents. So what I would have liked is to said, here's our best thoughts that match up with what we've heard. But here's, um, because it may not be perfectly aligned, here's some options. And I don't, I don't see any.
So that's, that's the point of these two items that were bubbling up.
Now, I've talked about the whole thing. If, if this had never, oh, we've got some more money here, if that had never happened, I still have the same question. Yeah, you, I think you have done, the team has done a really good job of reflecting that and around the margins. Uh, you know, there's always room for some that before. And I don't have the tools. You haven't given me the tools to say, well, if you wanna do a little more over here, then our choice would, you know, if we have to cut something, this is what we, we would suggest that you give up, given that you have set on that.
So I, I, um, our intent was to bring you a list of what we believe are the priorities at this point. And that's, that was the expenditure changes. The only one that is.
You're, you're not hearing me.
Okay.
You're not hearing me, I'm not talking. This is part of it, but a small part of it, I'm talking about the whole enchilada. Uh, our operating budget of seven hundred and fifty million or whatever it is, to say there's always that partial piece, you know, there's a lot of that that's just not yet. That. But there's some things around the margin of, we could push for a little more here, like in IT, but that would mean a little less over here. And I don't have a sense from you all, your best judgment of what would be the little less over here. Because we always want, want a little more.
See, and I feel, I feel like we've already done that little, I think we've already done that when we brought the proposed budget to you.
No, you haven't, I have no idea what I'm, I'm talking about that. If, if it's seven hundred fifty million, my theoretical question is, what was that last ten thousand if you're in, intrinsic least value?
I can, I can tell you that we don't do it one item at a time. Okay? And so when you say it's the last thing, we don't have a last thing. That's what I'm trying to share.
But actually, you did, because it showed up here in a couple of these. The last thing was, sorry, I'm not talking about the, the correction or even the carryover. But the, the art plan was, uh, well, we got a little more money. And certainly, you know, I, you know, we all, we all look hard, so it's not, it's, well, that sounds really great. And your judgment was that was the next thing on, as opposed to some other?
Actually, it was, did not work that way. And so what, the way it worked is Guadalupe and I collected from people throughout the system, things that needed to be adjusted. And when I compiled the list I had, I shared it with him. He shared his, we got one master list and that's what came forward. It, it wasn't something where, it, it was.
Let me try this.
Yeah.
Let, let me try this.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I mean, I think, I, I hear what you're saying, so, uh, to, to come here tonight to say, we've done some further reconciling from our original proposal, looks like we're up four and a half million. Uh, you know, here's a menu of investment areas, uh, we've done some initial thinking. We've done our best to rank them, but maybe the board has a different way that they wanna rank them or maybe other things on the list that we've heard you say. And we've kind of done a rough cost estimate of those. So looking at this full menu, what do you wanna order?
Yeah, if, if we're, if we're looking at marginal changes, we have to know the trade-offs. Uh, because we might say, yeah, go arts, the, the trade-off is, you know, if, if we wanna do the arts thing, oh, wow, let's expand southeast too. You know, another two, two weeks there sounds good too. What are we giving up? Because at that point, we might say, well, second thought, crap, we're gonna have, you know, we have a limited budget. Or we might say, oh, well, hell yeah. Or we might say, yeah, they're both good, good, we're gonna have to put a little more down here. That's, and I, I'm not hearing a trade-off.
So maybe, maybe another question to ask is, if we have, in our reconciliation of revenue, if more money comes forward, is there consensus on what, what?
Let me ask you honestly a question.
Alright.
If, if we get five million less, what would be the number one, two, three things that we can?
I don't have that answer right here, I have to consult the team to ask.
Okay, that's, but I tell you somehow you implicitly made that decision to include what was funded and what wasn't.
Like, that, using an ROI on budgeting, so were the things that had the highest ROI that got in? And if so, then what are the lowest ROI?
Return.
Oh, I'm, just a different way to.
We're still developing our academic return on investment process. I'm working with getting the instructional leadership to join us in a training this year. And so, um, we are not as far along as I'd like to be in that process.
So let me ask, so you talked earlier a little bit ago about board priorities. So for example, I'm still wondering, so my big priority is that we get all kids literate. And we've talked about, there isn't a lot of, um, dollars for investment in beyond, uh, looking at tier one. So if there are other investments here or, or money is available, for me as a board member, that would be a priority to look at how we support the continuum of students towards literacy.
Tier two, tier three?
Yes. So I mean, that's an example, if you talk about where are our priorities, to me, that's number one. And I would choose that, I mean, I wouldn't wanna have to make terrible choices, but to me, that's like, something that, but, but for, for public education, I think that that's what we will be owe every child is literacy. So to me, that's kind of a tops. So, so I'm looking at the expenditure changes in the room. Okay, so the, um, the expenditure changes. So correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of these are corrections, um, or things that, um,
I would say the first one is an actual correction. And then there's two carryovers.
Right, so, so the carryovers are basically just givens. This is not, it, it, it's not a, it's not a gimme. Like, it's, it's just gonna be what it is. Unless we made a very explicit decision not to apply the unspent maintenance budget to next, to, to the summer work.
Right, we can take that off the list.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, so we would have to make a decision on that. And, and the wisdom of doing that, we can debate, but, okay, but otherwise, your, your approach is that it, it is standard operating procedure in districts that, that this carryover happens, right?
It's a practice I instill in my prior district and I made it so that that part could function over.
Okay. So the, the successful school survey, I'm assuming that is.
I would say that was an oversight, we, we should have had that in the budget the first time.
Well, but you, you could also, I guess, ask the question, we just did it, we're just getting the research, like, is it in every year? Like, do you need to do it every year? Is it in every other year? I mean, I, I would say, you know, just having looked at it, it's like, it looks like it's great data, but I, you know, wonder then we're gonna start to do another data cycle without actually doing something with the data that we currently have. So it could be in every other year.
Okay, um, technology support, that also sounds like it was a, we probably should have done that. So.
As, there is a general fund impact as we modernize our schools, absolutely.
Okay, um, so the foundation, okay, so it's the community engagement, not foundation, okay, community engagement and strategic partnerships, that's a hundred and fifty grand. And that was, correct me if I'm wrong, that was pretty much a, um, a response to what you heard at the last, right? So Jonathan's team's gonna take that hundred and fifty grand and parlay it into a mountain of money.
Not, not in a vacuum though, I mean, I, I'm going back to Scott's question, is like, all these things are trade-offs. So would I, you know, wanna put more money into literacy, to Julie's point, to tier two and tier three? Probably over some other things, I'm just.
I'm just articulating the logic behind it, right?
Right.
Right?
One through.
Okay. Um, Tubman and Rosemary Heights and Oakley Green, that's money that has already been encumbered?
It's money that was budgeted to be spent on, um, the, the new middle schools. And they still have work to do to get going as a new middle school, and they haven't spent all of their funds. And so the request was to carry it over to continue, continue to support that process.
Okay, so that's, I mean, we, we could theoretically decide, you know what, we're, we're, we're not gonna do that.
Right.
We're gonna take that nine hundred thousand dollars and head to something else. But, but it's a carryover, so.
But I'm not even sure what we're doing with it, this is, I mean, part, there's not a lot of detail.
Okay, um, so. Okay, so, so my point is that, um, there's not a lot, e- even in this list, there's not a lot here that was driven by, oh, look, we have extra cash, what are we gonna do with it? A, a lot of this was already kind of baked. And you could un-bake it, I mean, you could, you could do something, but, um, okay, so the only thing, it, it sounds like to me, the, the only thing that was really a, um, we're gonna take a chunk of money and we're gonna decide to do something different is the NASTRA's education, is that fair?
I, I don't get that logic, I don't. To me, like, there's no budget until there's an approved budget.
Right.
So, um, so I think like, we encumbered this or we spent it, it's like, we haven't because, like, this is the budget process for next year, it's not like these guys get to go to the front of the line necessarily. And I guess I would look at, it's like, so if we didn't spend it this year, I'd like a lot more questions, like, why didn't we spend it? Um, there must have been a reason we didn't spend it. And then what specifically is going to? Because, I mean, both those, you know, those numbers, that's three and a half million dollars. And so, but I think the point about this list is, you, you could prioritize. the point about this list is you you could prioritize some of these things in this list, but just Scott's larger point is there's six hundred and something million dollars where there were other trade offs made.
So so the the investment in MTSS, uh whatever many millions that was, it's a it's a fair game question, I think, to say, well, instead of six million, we do five and a half and throw a half a million, and I'm just throwing numbers here, half a million for tier two, tier three. Or or or, and now. If if this is gonna be the board's budget, we we have to have at least some of some of that. And and yes, a lot of a lot of our values are baked into it. Again, I wanna wanna reiterate, it's a really good budget proposal, David. So I'm I'm arguing around the edges and I speak for myself, but you know, I wanna feel like I had something to do here besides saying, yeah, that's good.
It's a common feeling by a budget committee, usually I'm used to working with, which includes your your CVRC would be mixed in here instead of what this district has by statute. It's a more separate process, right? It's a common feeling, the budget statutes were created in a time before measure five, before you had measure fifty, where there wasn't a predetermined permanent tax rate. The budget committee used to determine how much money would be raised by taxes by actually approving a variable tax rate that could go up or down. At this point, and where we are with measure five and measure fifty, is we have a permanent tax rate that never changes. So I often hear from budget committees, there's no decision to be made here. I don't feel like I'm really owning this process. And it's a lot of it is because you no longer have that decision of what should the tax rate be for um to support the district. And the system was designed.
I I have no experience with that system, and that's not what I'm talking about.
Okay, it's the expenditures and, I mean, frankly, we get a, um, I mean, I think ideally, the budget is a blend of the expertise, this professional expertise of the staff and the board bringing community values to the process, and it's a melding of those two. And um I mean, I just collectively on the board, there's, you know, a hundred years, over a hundred years of PPS experience, which, you know, and and staff bringing hundreds of years of professional experience and melding that. And what I think we're trying to articulate is that, yes, to some degree, some of the values we're bringing um are baked into here, but not all, so just to say, and here it is, and we're approving the tax rate, I mean, I think the tax rate is just like an afterthought. I don't think I don't think anybody runs for the the board to set the tax rate. So.
I don't, I don't recognize that, saying the tax rate is anywhere being in industry or against.
It's a line item in the resolution, like setting the the actual rate. But I don't, I think that's a, and this is what you have to do to get the budget, so it's more about, I think what we all bring is like, how does this impact students, I mean, and from a non educator's, except Julie, from non educator's standpoint. But it's not, it's not about the tax rate, that's just a mechanism that happens or an action that happens along with people at the budget.
Scott, how could, what would be helpful to you, cause I'm having a hard time understanding what you're being.
Right, so for example, if the board agreed with Julie and said, we want you to put some resources uh to make some headway, yeah, meaningful headway in tier two, tier three literacy intervention. What would be your recommendation of, you know, if we did X amount, we would get this, and we did Y amount, we'd get that. And if we increased expenditures here, our recommendations would be, if we have to cut somewhere, um here's one place we would recommend cutting that on. Or maybe, you know, there there's a certain point where you can't really rank things. To say, here's, here's our best judgment as to where we would cut. That's that's what I'm looking for. Uh so I'm getting the 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 request to say, well, we'd like to spend some more money here. But I wanna be responsible and know what that trade off is. Cause there's lots lots of places, lots to spend more money on, but I gotta know the trade off side too. We might come back around seeing that, we might come back around and say, oh, you guys nailed it. Or we might say, no, these are all tough choices and that's, that.
I I I get what you're saying and this is the board's budget, there's not an approved budget, it's all general fund, everything here. You haven't done maintenance in years, you don't have to do two point four million, as one example.
Yeah, but isn't the year a slight change?
I I would I would love to have art science be a part of this project where we could attach a coefficient ROI to a student outcomes with dollars on any any number of a menu of issues. Uh I don't know how the board was making those decisions historically, uh but that's certainly some of the direction we wanna head. Uh but maybe just to back up a little bit about how staff arrived at what you see in this budget book, which is never gonna be perfect, but you know, we we spent dozens of hours locked in a room together and said, everybody, you're all new chiefs here, basically, new department heads. What's it gonna take, a- after we subtract off of the budget, all of the staffing we have to provide, this is what's left. And so tell me what it's gonna take to run each of your departments at its basic core function so that it's stabilized and we can operate. And now, once you've all done that, what would be the next level or two of work that you would love to do? And so literally, everybody charted that around the room. And then we asked the next question, now, of all the things that you would love to do beyond your core essential services are gonna have any impact on student outcomes, which are most directly a through line to student outcomes? And that's when we came to our realization, it's it's gonna be sped because we have to, and we haven't done that well. It's gonna be core curriculum, because without that, we're not, we can't even satisfy our basic mission. And third, our kids are in crisis and they need more behavior supports. And through all our conversations with labor partners, that's gonna be the third area we're gonna be investing in. And so that's how we came to sort of our thinking about what would constitute our budget message and where we would apply our resources. And so, you know, we've gotten a little bit better numbers, we've reconciled, of course, we took some discretion in prioritizing uh a few of the things we've heard along the way. But you know, there's there's always some margin, uh uh and and I would love to bring you the menu, because all we would have to do is pull out all those charts and we would list for you what all that next level of work is across the entire organization. And you would see sort of how we how we came to those conclusions, but you might decide, we've been talking to our constituents, that thing that was on your list that didn't appear necessarily for nineteen twenty in a cuts budget, is that something actually we wanna prioritize over this? And we could, we could have that back and forth conversation if you wanted to kind of get a fuller sort of picture of what we had to contend with. Uh so that's the exercise we went through. And uh and there's a few more things, you know, that we've heard in our conversations. Um you know, we shouldn't frame, we shouldn't, we didn't have to frame these as, and board, we just, you know, just blessed this, this is this is how, you know, we have a little more money, this is this is where it should go. It's like, here's some of our best thinking, here's ten more things that we debated. Uh uh there isn't an exact sort of coefficient attached to any of them, because not all of them are student outcome related. Some of them are just necessary work in the district that we should begin to pay attention to. Um but it it's totally up to the board's discussion and discretion to sort of, you know, let us know how they how they wanna prioritize.
So I can, I can throw out my list if that helps change a dynamic. Of the things that, either questions I have or places where I, and a lot of them aren't gonna be any surprises, but I've raised before. Um so the tier two and tier three, struggling, struggling, students struggling to read, if you don't master that, we're sunk as a district. Um I'm gonna go back to the Roosevelt capital dollars. I think we don't have an adequate response to the community of what happened to the five million, so if we're spending money in capital, why aren't we spending it? Or you're marking it.
So it's there.
Pardon?
So it's there.
Right, I've, seems like that's what the board committed to do and the district did. And until until we pass a resolution saying, we don't wanna do that, I feel like their five million should sit there until we get the CTE plan and go.
You you, but your first item, I just wanted to capture that, right? You get investments in tier two and three, um curriculum, training.
Around literacy and the, you know, students, you know, leaving third grade, you know.
In literacy specifically.
Right. Um I'm just gonna go through my list, I'm sorry, yeah, we got.
That's that's probably the most doubtful thing at this point.
Okay, so um I'm concerned because I haven't seen the budget detail and it wasn't originally in the um the org chart, um the systems performance office. If we're gonna go deep as a district on um performance and really shifting our budget and our people's focus around improving student performance, um we better make sure that office is capable of supporting it. So again, I don't have enough detail to know whether it's enough, but I don't wanna get to February of next year and it'd be like, we don't have people in that office to do what we need to do, because that's probably our most important work. The middle grades, um sort of a base equitable, a base of equitable offerings. How is that defined? So if you have, you know, three K eight's that kids don't have a world language, we should add that, or whatever the whatever the base equitable.
You mean the middle grades?
The middle grades, I don't wanna say middle schools, cause it's the K eight's usually that are. Then um sort of similar to the systems performance auditor, um I'm concerned that um the office of equity has one person in it and that that's not enough to support a district that has long historic um racial equity issues. And um I think it's, highlights the priority it is for you Guadalupe, of you being the chief equity officer, but also there needs, you gotta have people underneath that. And I think um what I hear is, you know, like, one person in the central office is a not, so losing the equity sort of action teams and where there's a system of supports for the equity work, whether it's, you know, embedded in different functions, but that that, it seems to be missing. And I think some of the things that are manifesting themselves in our schools, the issues that are getting raised, is a reflection of not having that. Um this is a teeny issue, but I raised with Claire, I think there's a small amount needs to be added to the internal performance auditing office, um and we're still beneath the number. Going into next year, you know, some sort of incremental funding for both polling for the bond and communications. Um because I don't, I don't believe we've set ourselves up to be successful. And going back out to the community with probably will be a billion dollar bond. And then the the last bullets I just had was, I had asked at previous board meetings some questions about the executive um office budgets and I'd still.
Working on it.
I'd still like to see that, because to me, that's part of what the community will look at as the trade offs that are made. And um so my my last question is, does this, does this budget allow all high school students to take a full schedule of classes? I'm gonna give you a second question. Seth? Is that, are you correct or?
Can you ask the question?
Okay. Is, does this budget allow all students, high school students, to take a full day of classes?
We will get to the answer.
I strongly suspect there will be two ways to interpret that question. Can each student, if they so choose, take a full day of classes? And I expect the answer will be yes. Have we budgeted enough FTE so that every student can do that? I will be amazed if the answer is not no. I don't.
We have to have ninety percent of the student, the high school students, taking a full day of classes. So I guess the the question, I should thank you for the question, the better question is, are the schools staffed for ninety percent of the high school students to take a full day school, given the um staffing requirements in the PAT contract? So that's my list.
Can you also factor into that any waivers that we have requested from ODE on on the uh?
Instruction plan?
Instruction allowance here.
Julie, I just wanna make sure, um in the Roosevelt capital dollars, the staff made a recommendation of using CET as well as um the remaining two thousand twelve dollars.
So um that's great, I I don't have a preference of where it came from when I wasn't on the board when the original resolution was raised, but I think the board made a commitment, whether, even though it was a split vote, to to do something, and I think it's it's makes a lot of sense to do it informed by the new CTE plan.
No, I'm talking about CET.
No, so it doesn't matter to me how it's paid for, it's just, there was a commitment that was made and if if the district's not gonna do it, like, the board should vote to not do it. Um but until they do, I think it should be a big part of the budget.
Isn't, we've sent out memo, correct?
Yeah, no. Is that memo?
Yeah, okay, should have the next forty eight hours.
Yeah, it's it's complete, so I don't understand why it didn't go.
So I will. Part of this is like, I think the Roosevelt community feels like the money's hiding under one of the shells and um
Just being trans. So the memo went out today.
Okay. Nope.
I'll I'll figure that out.
So it should be represented in the, it seems like in the budget, if that's.
And it and it already is by being in the CET and the two thousand twelve law. It's in, there is funds to support it, and that's what's in our memo to the board. And my apologies, I thought I'd been gone now.
So I I appreciate the listing, and I'm sure every board uh has items, and I know every chief in this room has items in this um as well, and then and then for some of them, um they're they're interdependent from one another or uh like the question around the executive office budget, last Tuesday, we shared scope for priorities uh that would be funded with things like the educational proposal for the broader community around the vision, the development of the strategic plan, uh the application of a racial equity lens, and I know, maybe we have a difference around what we think a team would accomplish versus every leader in the school system being racial equity oriented and able to to lead those conversations, and we're seeing that all here. Um the the additional investments in um, you know, piloting or bringing on board active behavioral interventions, programming, middle school redesign work, that's, that takes funding to to do that work, bring people together. Um the system performance was definitely listed there and a high priority for me to do the kind of work we wanna do. The system performance was definitely listed there and a high priority for me to do the kind of work we wanna do. Plus that, that we wanna, we've already agreed with the board, it's gonna be a part, there's a million dollars amount personnel, there's more than a million dollars of activity there, so. You know, I, I would need to decide which of these things are we gonna do little or no activity in and which ones are we gonna prioritize. This is where I started drawing, you know, connecting the R between everybody's list, see what, what, what combined efforts can, can we orient there. And it's the same thing with sort of the next level of items that, that, you know, I know our department leads. Would also want to think about, could we use more money for title line training? Absolutely. Could we use more money to add a second section of PIS in schools and schools that are interested in it? Absolutely. Like, so there, there's, there's a list of, a menu list that I know that they each also have in mind, but it would be helpful because this is the time that we have for this to, to hear from each of you, because maybe there's things that really stand out or that you are in consensus about and we need to figure out how to, how to balance the books and move forward a next iteration. That's, that's the point of the discussion.
And part of it also, if I'm looking down the executive staff, it's like. Whenever we get it, like, for example, I asked for the year over year increase and like more, like, what, what got added, what got decreased.
And we're getting that.
Right, it's been. I think it's hard to argue against any of these things or for it without.
Sure, and, and I could also just spread it all out and we, me and my assistant, that's the only part of my budget, right? But because it's, it's the, a million bucks for a billion dollar organization is nothing. When you're sort of a discretionary amount to pursue next level work, you know, in each of these areas.
So from my perspective, just like every single dollar in the board office is gonna get scrutinized, I think the same thing happens in the executive staff because that's what happens when you're at the top and you're accountable. It's just, I mean, it's, it's not a criticism of what's in it, it's just there's a higher level of accountability and scrutiny. Just like we, I mean, we were talking about, you know, a couple thousand bucks in the board office budget of. So I just think that's the expectation because if I'm a, if I'm a parent in a school that doesn't offer something in a, in a middle grades, you know, a K eight, non-enroll one, and I'm looking at over what West Sylvan has or Mount Tabor or Selwood. And we say, well, that would cost two hundred thousand dollars to add and then I look at the budget item and I'm just gonna keep picking on this. This one light item, because this is what people in Phoenix will ask, is like, you went from eighteen nineteen to nineteen twenty. For travel out of district, it went from three hundred to seven hundred thousand. So there's four hundred thousand dollars in increase and you're prioritizing, this is the conversation, you know, conversation you have with community member of. You're prioritizing out of district travel over something else. And so I do think we have to be able to rationalize and explain at the top of the. At the top of the district are expenditures and.
So they, they might also say, you recommend a two audit, moves to two auditors, why?
Says, isn't one enough to get the whole?
No, we, we, we had two auditors from last year.
Well, and, and the superintendent's office for probably the last eight years has hovered around a million dollars.
I'm not criticizing, you don't understand, we are all accountable jointly, just like we're accountable for the board office budget, this, you know, the superintendent, the executive staff, same level of accountability and just like we'll need to make, you know, make the case of, you know, why we're. We're spending money for either in district or out of district travel, it's like senior staff should, you know. That, it has to withstand the scrutiny and the trade off of other things that we're not saying we're gonna do. It just, I think that's a highly.
Yeah, I don't have issue with being transparent about the public's dollars, because I think I'm rather frugal about it. But there might be some things that, you know, folks maybe don't think about when there's an extra out of state travel. Like, some of the people sitting around here actually were recruited at those events, for instance, you know. Or PPS's work was highlighted or spotlighted in a presentation that, or, or we learned something that now is influencing the budget proposal that we have in front of you for next level work next year, for instance. So, you know, those are some examples of things I have to weigh and I know that there's more priorities here than a million dollars is gonna move. You know, work in, but people wanna know what that is and I don't have a problem sort of describing that. Or I could just take the million bucks and spread it along the chiefs and they can do that next thing that they wanted to do and we don't have to move on any of these priorities. So there's lots of ways to sort of invest those monies and, you know. I've outlined what those priority areas are gonna be and they'll be accounting for how it was spent to begin.
But you're, you're talking, the issue is, you're saying you're not okay with any kind of discretionary budget. That is not specified right now, is that correct?
No, I, what I, at the last meeting, I asked to see what the year over year changes were. So I haven't seen it yet, it's apparently coming. And like what was added and what was, you know, what went down and, you know, I think just like we went through ours with a degree, to a degree of detail that it did not happen as a part of the organization, that that should happen.
I don't think, I don't think that was good use of the time for the board to debate some nominal expenditures, but we should be spending our conversation talking about the big areas of expenditure and what return we're getting on those investments. So I, I think it's important to be transparent about it, but I don't think we should spend an inordinate amount of time around a rather nominal budget. Coming from my last district where I served as deputy superintendent, I had a multimillion dollar discretionary fund. So, you know, it's a different context here.
Ten, ten thousand dollars spent on flower lays, we're gonna hear about it for the next ten years, so small amount of money.
Okay, and that hasn't happened in years, so give it a rest.
What, what do you talk about, Julie?
No, I'm, I'm just saying.
That's really irresponsible right now.
Why is it irresponsible? I'm just saying, small expenditures can have a big impact.
Especially when you talk about it all the time, I mean, the, the secretary of state's audit has a certain place. It is a moment in time. It, as, as you frequently said when it came out, it had certain motivations behind it. And I don't think we have to govern our lives based on a deeply flawed state audit.
The point was, is that a small expenditure has impacts. And I just think, everybody has a different.
So I thi- I think it's time for us to regroup here, it's getting late. And staff hat needs an outcome out of tonight. And that is, is there consensus from the board? I've heard some, I have one item that has, I've heard from two board members that it's important. And that's literacy, tier two, tier three intervention, making sure every third grader can read.
But I'd like to give our board members an equal opportunity to each take a turn because I heard one and I'd like to hear all seven.
Well, I liked everything that Julie had. I think that all makes sense. And the only thing I can think of adding is what it would cost to implement the requests we got for implementation of five two seven two and as far as I understand it now, there's a request for TOSA. And there's a request to, to fund their proposal for teacher professional development, which I think is like thirty fifty thousand dollars.
Their model of what professional development training should happen, so let's just caveat on there, I'm all for teacher training.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah.
It doesn't have to be the one they propose, just like the other specifics and their demands.
Right.
It's their proposal.
Yeah, yeah. So that's all I have. No, I think, I think that's great, we've just made a public commitment that we're gonna do climate justice. You got people with extra time to work on that, an extra person he's not gonna argue about, so to move that work.
Okay, I'll go. So I wanna go back to the priority investments that actually are already in the budget. Six million dollars in fit and services and classroom positions. I'm in favor of that. Three million dollars in differentiated school supports. I'm in favor of that. Two million dollars in curriculum development. I think that's a good thing. Million dollars in health and safety for building maintenance and transportation. Yep, wish we had more, but I'll take it. Basically, quarter of a million dollars in social emotional learning, yes. Quarter of a million in multi-tiered systems of support, yes. Quarter of a million in professional development, wish we had more, yes. I mean, I wish we had more in all of them, but I think these are good. Maintenance carryover, two point four million dollars, oh hell yes. I mean, we haven't talked about it recently, but a year ago, our hair was on fire about maintenance. I mean, we talk about it all the time, we used to yell about it, getting, you know, talking about maintenance endlessly. We haven't talked about it enough lately, so yeah, two point four million, absolutely. I mean, if, if I had endless money. I would probably wanna do more things. I, I think throwing some money at the climate justice stuff, since promises were made and not kept, yeah. I'm in favor of fulfilling the promises made to Roosevelt. However we do it. I don't know, I mean.
What is turning?
I, I don't know, I, I. This feels like an exercise in futility. Because unless. Unless there's, there's some sense of what we can cut. And I don't know what that could be, because we're pretty bare bones. Then each one of us sitting here getting a wish list based on stuff we heard. I think that's irresponsible, to be perfectly honest.
Well, you know, you can label your own actions, but part of the process is we, we get elected to the board to bring forth issues that we've heard in the community or that we've experienced or that are missed by staff or that maybe we have a different priority, it's not, it's not irresponsible, it's. Part of the discussion is the give and take, if you don't provide our own list.
Okay, and for years and years and years, I watch boards.
You know what, right now, we're doing a process inside.
Get it done and let them go.
Yeah.
Be into that.
Julie, did you? It's hard to run.
No, I think I will do it at the. Big ticket, I don't know that. What resources to just provide to. What was it, Julie?
Sorry.
No, just. Yeah. Also, it's, I think ahead of the dyslexia, once we start ringing, there's gonna be the need and so. I'll roll into that.
Next.
That's not a small item.
I really, Seth, that's why I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it at one.
One big present, lots of little presents.
I'm gonna leave it at one. That's a different strategy. Paul?
I think that all of the things that have been mentioned are very good. There is another issue I talked with Dr. Montina about and that is that when you look at the actual classes that are intended to help middle school students who are behind. You find that the one that has the most is Jackson, which is not coincidentally, I think, our highest performing middle. Not just our highest performing middle school, our highest performing school. Every year, for both language arts and for math, they have the, the one core course and then they have two supplemental courses for that year for bringing, bringing up the kids who are behind. And not coincidentally. Jackson also has most electives of any of our middle schools. Now, they don't have a huge foundation. They've only got about seven hundred kids compared to West Sylvan's thousand. West Sylvan's got a bigger foundation. I don't know how they are doing that. I don't know how they're throwing those supports, but when you look at the performance of some of their feeders, Stevenson and Marca, they are clearly doing a very good job. I think it would be us to find out how they're doing that. Because we're talking about outcomes, well, there is a very important outcome. And. They're throwing some FTE at it and I don't know where it's coming from.
Or they're using their available time and current staffing and resources in different ways from most middle schools.
Apparently, they are, yeah.
So whatever it is, we should learn from it.
But how are they, yeah, how are they covering everything?
And their basic art school.
Uh, well, yeah.
It's the music influence. But as, as we do middle school redesign, we should think about what are the unique features there that we could learn from. People wanna integrate it all in our schools.
I think we're, I'm sorry, just, I kinda, I just wanted to answer your question. So the last time Jackson Middle School had money to pay for an FTE from foundation dollars was two thousand eleven. So they have not raised any foundation dollars since.
Yeah, I knew they didn't.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
So without supplemental staffing, they're accomplishing a schedule where there's more robust academic intervention time for students.
And more electives.
And more electives, both.
Have cake, eat it too, have cake, eat it too, yeah, they got it.
So what other thing, here's the summer school dollars, there's like over a million dollars, is that for this summer or the following summer?
For the summer arts academy we're proposing?
Well, is that, is that what that is?
I was only talking about that.
No, there's, well, in, in the budget, there's like a million dollars for summer instruction.
There's also. Correctly, if I'm wrong, Seth, that's generally only credit recovery for, for seniors, teenagers too.
Okay, is. Well, I was wondering what that, what that was, because I think the last couple years, there hasn't been anything.
I haven't seen Portland do summer extended learning in a long time, so that's something you're talking.
Right. Yeah, there wasn't, it hasn't been.
Yeah, I, I would love to do that, but that, it'll take resources.
It's just credit recovery, right?
So that did not make it. Next summer, so.
I, I don't know what line item you're talking about, but it might also be the land Roosevelt's part of county.
Yes, well, we were, we were proposing that for Roosevelt's, but they wanted to think of what they're doing. So we're looking at, you know, what offering we make, certain lands, certain.
I swear somewhere I saw a million dollar, I don't, I haven't found it myself. And I was meaning to ask you, but I was just wondering like, what is that?
I, I know that we set aside money, it's generally for high school, we're gonna drive, we can work in some summer opportunity for less. And so, and then arts offers, um, arts offers.
Yeah, we don't have like a, if you're not ready for fourth grade and.
Well, I wish we did.
Pardon?
I, I wish we had some summer learning, I'd like to call it a fifth quarter and I don't want it to look like the rest of the year, but definitely people wanna accelerate students who are not a grade level, who they don't go through summer or enter.
Your statement is generally.
Can we, can we watch our last?
Yes, please.
I'd like to take a look at tier two, tier three, because I think that's horrible. And then there's something about climate change.
But what?
Climate change. Is that. And that's. Yeah, keep, trying to keep it minimal. Happy that there's some alternative work programs for some, a few Band-Aids. Is that, now, we need Band-Aids over.
So is the middle grades and the music additive to your list or is it, is this your list? So, is the middle grades and the music additive to your list, or is it, is this your list?
I always have a hard time arguing against our-
And we just calls out what particular Band-Aid for bone on feeders and- Yeah. So, I'm just gonna keep it simple and keep it to the two things.
The humanities team has some work to do. Together proposal.
Okay, so now what? What happens now?
Well, I, I appreciate sort of, um, hearing more explicitly, sort of, you know, each individual board members, uh, areas. So, each, each of these items is gonna take some more work for staff to toss out, what would that look like, um, work can we integrate it? You know, it'll be our task to see how we make it all work. And hopefully, the next time, a year from us, as many of these as possible get, get worked in.
So, realistically, we're supposed to vote on this budget in May twenty eighth, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's two weeks from today, right? If we're gonna talk about this prior to May twenty eighth, which I suspect could be a good thing.
It would have to be.
It would have to be next week.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm wondering if, um, well, let, it's like, let me think about it overnight and come back.
So, in terms of what I heard multiple conventions out, where the tier two, tier three and climate justice, climate justice, so in terms of priorities and that-
I'm a Rosado.
Rosado.
Well, she's got a, she's got a different, yeah.
We've got a memo, we've got a memo coming up there.
So, so no middle, no middle school equity, or middle grade equity, or?
So, we've got, so, what do you mean?
Wow. Well, I mean, I just-
Okay, you know, you're, you're talking about, there's, there's a, there's a million whos, you know, of stuff that we would do if we had more money. So, what are you suggesting that we, you wanna cut back on special ed?
Well, I guess, you know, I guess I, I would ask is like, so, like, climate justice and some of the other new ads, that's, I'm just saying I'm surprised because for the two years I've been on the board, that's been a major issue for the board. And we made progress by opening two middle schools and by providing additional support to Oakley Green, but the work is not done yet.
So, we got-
So, I, so for the same example, like, I, like, is there, is there a way to do climate justice with fewer resource, fewer resources? Is this a resource issue or is this a focus issue? Which sometimes focus isn't dollars. Um, and is that more important than, you know, kids in, at a K eight who aren't getting sort of what we would consider a base level equity offer? Cause I guess if somebody-
So, do you, I mean, we've heard four point four million.
Sorry, I don't have my glasses on.
Well, it's right here in the slides. Items bubbling up, four point four million, we don't have it. Oh, we, we do, but it means where, do you wanna cut back? I'm saying, do you wanna cut back on special education's add-ins by four point four million or some other thing?
So, I'm, I'm back to your original question of what were, what were the other things that were close calls? Or, and I don't think anybody would say special ed would be, you know, the thing right at the line.
So, I, but I think we saw the things right at the line are the, the ad package that Chair Moore read on. I think they were pretty, pretty core stuff. And I'm willing to at least look at, and again, I'm not saying I'm voting yes to spend another hundred thousand or another two hundred fifty thousand on climate change. I wanna see what the trade offs might be, but as a, it's a pretty minimal trade off. And to me, the measure two, measure of the tier two, tier three, that is core work. And the, the add backs, you know, not the add backs, but the, the investments were pretty much limited to all core work in my curriculum.
Well, what about that, that nine hundred thousand that's there in the, with some of the middle schools is?
Yeah, I mean, to me, it seems, a lot of this seems undefined and-
Is there a way to? Yeah, is there a way to, to target some of that perhaps?
I guess if, I will, like, I'll drop the issue if it can show that kids in the middle, the middle grades are getting a base equitable package, not, they're all getting the same, cause we know that that's not gonna hap, that's not gonna happen. But that there's a base level of equitable programming at all the middle, middle grades. Cause just say, well, it's too expensive. It's like, well, we don't, we don't know that because, you know, what, what are we defining as? Sort of base level programming for the middle grades, but we'll-
Well, we did say something like, well, nobody's getting upstate. For example, so when we can-
You know, what is, good, office aid as an elective?
I apologize, I, I should have included that. We had to make a marginal, marginal change in middle school. We'd be getting rid of any kind of office aid kind of election.
Yeah. I guess I, you know, having, had my kids go to a, they went to a middle school, but it was a Title I middle school. And they got so few electives and they did have the whole office aid and like, it's, and then I had a student who went to, you know, the one that had every single elective. And I just think we should look at that. So, maybe I, so, I'm with you on the getting rid of the office aid, but maybe, except for when Claire was there. But maybe uplevel it one more, which is what do we think is the base? Like, do, do, does every seventh grader have access to take one world language? Cause if they don't, and that's just an example on it, we can pick what is, what the base level that we think they should have and do they all, do they all have it? Do they have art or music? Do they have, you know, one world language?
So, is, is four point four million the answer to that question? I, I don't even think that's really an accurate number. I, I'd like to do middle school redesign in a thoughtful manner that looks at all of it so that we actually have a clear definition with the community around the little grades will be. I think anything we're talking about right now that I think would be the extent of what we could look at is, you know, what's, what's the inventory of offerings and is there a glaring hole somewhere that we can try to plug? So that we don't have students now while we do that bigger work down the road, uh, is, is in shortage and experience. I'd have to catch up with the notes on the task force and what they discovered, cause I don't know what the scale of that is. Cause it's not gonna be four point four million, but I don't know if it's two schools and three sections of an elective or it's twelve schools and forty eight sections that we would, we would need to fund. But if there's a few places where that's been historically a problem and we've looked at their school budget and they haven't prioritized other things, then, then we could look at that. But I, I just have no assessment, uh, of what that would look like. And any approach we take would just be a bad egg for the coming year. So, that kids in middle school now could, could have that opportunity.
So, I guess the question is, when is the middle school redesigned? So, it's not gonna be done for this year. So, for, we have, this, this year is what it is, right? I mean, this upcoming next year, cause we're not implementing middle school redesign next year.
Yeah.
So, I do think there's nothing wrong with Band-Aids when kids are getting something really inequitable. And if it's one at least two years and it's not a big, it's not a sling, it's a Band-Aid. That, that seems to be the equitable thing to do, to recognize that this longer work, cause now we're into year two of the redesign. For those kids who are still in those schools, to make sure that we can say that they're, they're gonna head into high school having had the basics. And my, my sense is it's probably not anywhere close to four million.
I just don't know what the scale of it is. I don't know what we can pull together by Tuesday. So, um, I'm assuming that there's been some work that's, that's looked at this and um, I don't know if there's a middle school equity fund we can set aside for now while we work out with principals where, where some of those holes are. But I would have a whole lot of questions for our school communities if they made, are making decisions that is leaving some of those inequities in place for students also. So, I think this is a shared responsibility also. So, I-
Or then that's a, like a budget neutral solution that gets kids what they need.
It could be, and sometimes it is. I, I'm, I'm good at scrutinizing school budgets, but I don't know. But I could look at them all between now and Tuesday either.
Okay, school number eleven? I think we've done-
It's past Julie's back there.
Definitely.
It was helpful. I think the team has to regroup and we, we get a few hours of sleep and then get back at it. And, um, I'm sure the team has been listening. Um, and, you know, they have a scope of work in mind. Uh, I don't think anyone's mentioned anything that we wouldn't be supportive of. It's simply a matter of, uh, how we want to prioritize our resources. Maybe some other body of work gets sequenced for the year after, so we can tackle some of the things you brought up. Those, that's some of the conversation we need to have.
Okay, and can I just make a note? So, if we're adding another budget discussion, which I anticipated to next week's meeting.
The work session or?
It's a work session. So, it's a work session. Then we're gonna have to bump something else. So-
What's, what's currently on the next week's?
So, it's the SEAL Foundation Recognition, the College and Career Writing Miss Plan, the Evaluation of Alliance at Mead Campus, um, tieback from Resolution five eight, five nine, um, quarterly update from OSM and BAC, and the PPS Foundation Presentation.
So, we've been bumping the foundation presentation for the last, what, two months? So-
So, uh, to-
Can't we read the longs?
Well, what we're doing in September.
Well, we, we could just have a, we, we don't, if people would be satisfied with, um, memos, written memos on OSM and BAC, then we can dispense with an in-person presentation and that would open up some, some time.
I think it could still be posted with the agenda's information.
Right, yeah, right.
And then the community would see it.
Um, yeah, I think that's-
The, the College and Career Writing Miss, we do have some guests that are, have already made travel arrangements, I believe. So, we wanna try to keep them on.
Okay, but, so we can do that, but, um, it's still a pretty full agenda, so it's gonna be another late, late meeting.
What is the Lions' item?
It's part of the Benzer Project.
Is it the, is it the?
Whether, whether, is, whether it's a unified alliance or?
Just bring the proposal forward. Get it ready for people to see.
So, anyway-
For those of you that care, the Warriors crushed us in the fourth quarter.
I'm not.
Any of our, anybody that's important that I care, I can share all.
Thank you all for your points.
Thank you.